Thursday, November 7th, 2013. Meeting of the Buncombe County Board of Education, regular meeting in order. Presenting our colors tonight is the Robertson High School ROTC program. If you'll all please stand.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Feel pleased to remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, and please be seated. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to remind everyone that if you'd like to sign up for public comment, it's to your right, the back of the room. If you'll please sign up so we have a record of your attendance, please. Next, we'd like to approve the agenda. I'd like to make a couple of changes. I would like to remove the Irwin High School intent to purchase the fire alarm system completely from the agenda, and I would like to move from the consent agenda to the action agenda, the two items, the intent to award agreement for installation of fiber optic cable systemwide, and the intent to award agreement for installation of wireless network switches systemwide. Move both of those to the consent agenda. The motion to approve.
Sound move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so we have an agenda. Dr. Baldwin.
Earlier this afternoon, the State Board of Education officially released their results for the new Ready Accountability Assessment. And I want to thank Mrs. Swanger for getting those results to me fairly quickly, and we tried to crunch some numbers. You're going to be hearing a little bit later on from her and Mr. Gorsuch to give you a few more details with those. These results reflect each school district's performance scores from tests that were taken previously in 2012 and 13. Now, what makes these scores different from most of the past years? And the reason that they're different is because we, the state of North Carolina, has adopted a significant rise in standards that these scores will now be compared to. The bar has significantly been raised. I can report that overall, our schools fared quite favorably compared to the average performance across the state. In fact, in crunching some numbers, 72% of our 40 schools earned a higher performance, overall performance composite, than the state average. And we're a large system, so I think we should be extremely proud of that. I know we've got some principals back there have actually seen their scores, and I know they're extremely proud back there. Likewise, I'm also pleased to report that 79% of our schools either met or exceeded growth projections that were established by the state. And that's just as important, because the learning process is all about starting from point A to point B in growth. So we're very pleased with that as well. Buncombe County schools as a system exceeded the individual state performance averages in reading. We exceeded the state average by 8%. Math by 7%, and science by 5%. At the high school level, we exceeded state averages in math 1 by 5% and English 2 by 2%. We did fall a percentage point below the state average in biology, so we've got some room to grow in, especially this year. Glen Arden and Kane Creek, let me back up. Congratulations to Early College. I don't see Ms. Johnston here, but we want to congratulate them. They led all of our schools. Their passing rate was at 74.6%. Now, realize last year, just to give you a comparison, last year I believe they were at 98 or 99%. Is that correct? Or 100%? Jeff, thank you. Wow, I would have shortchanged Early College, would not have wanted to do that. But again, that is clearly reflective of how strong these standards now, from 100% to 74.6. And I will tell you, I've not seen scores across the state, but based upon these averages, I can assure you that our Early College is going to be easily in the top 10%, maybe top 5% in terms of performance. Glen Arden and Kane Creek followed closely behind, respectively, our best elementary and middle school performances. And as I've stated before, and I've said this several times, actually over the past three years, that if we are truly going to be serious about preparing our graduates to be career and college-ready for a globally competitive environment, the bar must be raised regarding academic expectations and rigor. Clearly, there will be gain that comes with some pain along the way, but it's important that we continue strongly on this course and challenge ourselves to reach these significantly higher standards. So, again, overall, with the increased standards, I think we, as a school system, can be pleased with this initial round, and again, we're going to go up over that bar in a few years. On November 20th, we will be hosting a Safe Schools Symposium that will occur from 9:00 in the morning to 2:00 PM. This will be a very highly interactive session. We will explore best practices when it comes to crisis prevention, response, and recovery. The symposium is open to interested parents, public safety professionals, school counselors, and mental health personnel from Buncombe County, and also surrounding counties. We anticipate already participants coming in from about seven surrounding counties. I want to thank Dr. Robbie Adele, and Dr. Adele's here with us tonight, for his leadership in organizing this session. I think we're up to over 200 participants already that have signed on. And a special thanks to our good partners, Biltmore Baptist Church, because they're going to be allowing their campus to host the event. The symposium attendance is free. We do ask that you register online by going to our district website. I don't see Joe, well, Joe Huff is a, raise your hand, Joe. Should make you stand up. I want to congratulate our Transportation Director, Joe Huff. I want to congratulate him on two counts. He is now a National Certified Director of Pupil Transportation, having successfully completed the very rigorous coursework that was required by the national organization. And on a second note, Joe and his staff just received our system's annual efficiency rating. We've been very proud of that rating and where it has stood over the past several years, and he continues that tradition. I know Mr. Lawfman would be very proud of you and your staff. It is at 97.32%. Now, I want you to think about Buncombe County and all the challenges that come with running those buses, and it also includes Asheville City, too, because that is one of our partnerships. But to have a rating of 97.32% is outstanding, and the state average, by the way, is at 93.8. So again, a well-deserved congratulations, Joe, to you and your staff. Yesterday was STEM Awareness Day. It was celebrated through educational tours. We had about 50 Buncombe County school teachers and administrators. I know Mr. Allison was there with us yesterday, and probably a few more that I will miss. We went to two of the area's largest manufacturers, advanced manufacturers. Again, that is at the core of what our partnerships that we'll be creating for our new STEM High School. We visited Lenamar and Eaton. A big thank you to Kristi Cheek, Kristi, raise your hand, and the Asheville Chamber of Commerce for organizing this event. And I think last year, if you recall, Mrs. Cheek, how many middle schoolers did we have take tours across Buncombe County and the manufacturers?
Over 700.
Now, first off, middle schoolers. 750 of them, and coordinating them to have opportunities to go into the workplace, and again, reality checks. And I think, again, this is part of preparing our kids. We have to do more and more of that so that they truly understand, along with educating many of their parents, what the reality of the workplace truly is and how it is very global in scope. Finally, I've asked Associate Superintendent Suzanne Swanger and Director of Technology, Dr. Monty Fuchs, to help me provide you the board, and I know you had a little preliminary opportunity to hear from Dr. Fuchs. We want an update provided to our guests, the MTAC plan, as we expand and enhance our digital learning capabilities over the next two years. This was made possible through local legislation, and it was sponsored by two of our House representatives. I certainly want to give credit to them, that's Nathan Ramsey and Tim Moffett. It allows us flexibility to use undesignated lottery funds in the amount of $5 million toward the purchase of digital technology. So before I turn it over to Mrs. Swanger and Dr. Fuchs, just a quick reminder to our community that school funding comes in two separate and basic categories, and this is very important. This is what makes school funding different than many other businesses and corporations. We have two categories, operational and capital. Capital funding, such as lottery, or for us in Buncombe County, Article 40 and 40 sales tax, it cannot be used to cover operating costs, and that includes paying for classroom teachers. So we're not able to use our capital funding or lottery funding to pay for those teaching positions. You may recall that in our past budget presentations, we identified staff salaries and benefits, and if you remember, when we looked at our operating budget, it represented well over 80% of our operating costs were in our human resources and our salaries and benefits. That concludes my comments, but I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Swanger and Dr. Fuchs to talk a little bit about technology. Chairman Reinhardt.
All right.
Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. We are thrilled to update you on the progressiveness that we are making for meeting this challenge of providing more technology, both infrastructure and devices, to our schools. And I think those of you that sit in our school buildings, you will be so excited to know that technology will be faster, smoother, and more dependable. And we are building the superhighway that will allow us maximum efficiency. Some of our older computers will be able to be repurposed and run more efficiently instead of going to the discard pile, and students will have more access through more devices. So all good news coming from technology. We have surveyed teachers to see what they would like. We have plans for more professional development. Our instructional technology facilitators have been working very hard with Power School, as you can imagine with report cards and attendance, but there are more features that they can share with our teachers to help better utilize technology in the classroom. So Dr. Fuchs is going to update you on the infrastructure side.
Good evening. Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, Board of Education. You saw some of this this evening already. I'm going to shorten that considerably and just give you the highlights of what we have an opportunity to do in Buncombe County schools and that you'll be voting on tonight. We are going to upgrade our fiber and cable throughout the network of Buncombe County schools, in every school. We are going to upgrade not only the wiring in those between the closets of each school, but also we're going to upgrade the switch technology. That's two separate bids that you're going to be looking at tonight. Those are the things that we're looking at specifically. We want to gain 10 gigabit speeds between our closets. We want to do 1 gigabit to the desktop that we currently can't support with the technology that we have. So what we're going to be doing here is, in one fell swoop, with the funding that has been given to us, we're going to move into the 21st century and support our students for the next five to seven years with an infrastructure that is, bar none, better than anything that you'll see anywhere. The idea behind this is so that we can increase our school security, we're going to be able to increase our communications capabilities between our schools, as well as within our schools, we're going to be able to build better labs, use better technology in our laptops, we're going to be able to do things that we haven't been able to do, like virtualization using, as Mrs. Swanger said earlier, older technology and make it act like newer technology. We're going to leverage the infrastructure that we currently have in our wireless. We're also going to leverage the current infrastructure that we have between our schools. So the slowest part of our network right now is in the schools themselves. These two RFPs and these two bids that are being presented to you tonight will eliminate that to the point where our entire school system will be fast and furious. These are some of the global specifics that we want to do. We want to implement the virtual desktop infrastructure like I was talking about. We want to be able to centralize our servers, instead of having servers out at the schools. Where we have about 146 that we're maintaining, I think 119 physical servers, and we're going to be able to centralize down to maybe 17 or 18 servers in the central office and still do the same job, but we'll be more centralized, we'll have better control, and it should be a much faster environment. As we're going towards one-to-one and BYOD capability, we're doing BYOD right now. We noticed an impact on our network already, but when we go to one-to-one and add that much more technology, we are going to need this infrastructure, and that is exactly why we're doing this. Without the robust infrastructure of this system to support the massive increases that we're expecting in the future, we're not going to be able to move forward. So this infrastructure, without question, is the opportunity to invest into a five- to nine-year future-proofing of our technology infrastructure, and it is the wisest thing that we can do right now. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Fuchs. Board, you're more than welcome to ask any questions now, or you can ask questions whenever we get to these two items on the action agenda, either way. Dr. Fuchs will be available, so, all right. Thank you, Dr. Fuchs.
Thank you.
All right, do we have some employees to recognize tonight?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Are you pulling double duty there?
I am pulling triple duty tonight. Just to let you guys know, Jan has been sort of surprised. I don't know if she's been surprised yet, but she is winning an award from the YMCA, and it's for the Community Champion of the Year, so that's a really big honor. And she found out about 5:30 that she wasn't going to be here at the meeting, so I managed to trick her into writing the script for tonight, except for this one part. So, our first person, we want to honor their time served, is Jenny Barrett, and she's been in Buncombe County for 20 years and is the principal at Haw Creek Elementary School. I was going to say that Jenny always wanted to be a teacher. She couldn't imagine a time when she didn't want to be, and she just loves being around kids. When asked what one of her favorite things about the job is, and that's a pretty standard answer with most educators, I think.
Where did you start all those 20 years?
I've been at Emma, who was there for 12 years. I was a teacher for a couple of years. Becky at Oakley and Williams, that's who was with us, and now we're all great.
Thank you very much.
Our next one is pretty special. It's Vicki Biggers, and she has been here for 40 years.
She comes to work with us smiling.
All right, so tell us about those four years. Where did you start?
Started in Henderson County.
Okay.
Couple of years moved to Davie County, got married, came back to Buncombe, which is the home of my husband. And spent 11 years at Irwin Middle, rest of the time in the North Buncombe District, except for last year off to Downe Springs, and now I'm right up there with you.
Our next honoree is from Owen Middle School, and she's a Career Exploration and Life Skills teacher, and her name is Leanne Cunningham. And there she is, and I did not get to speak to her before, but I bet if I asked her the favorite thing about the job, it'd probably be the kids.
The kids. I spent 10 years in the Al County Schools, doing career explorations and career development, and 17 in the community school, and 3 years at Irwin High School, wonderful place. That's where I got my education, and I retired. I couldn't stand it. I saw a beautiful middle school job, and it was the perfect job, the one I've always longed for, and I was passionate enough to be off of that this year, and here I am. And I'm just happy to be here, ready for 30 more.
Our next recipient is from Bell Elementary School, and she's a speech-language therapist, and of course, she loves the students, and she has a very varied work history. She has focused on students with hearing loss and worked at the school for the deaf, and her name is Cynthia McDaniel.
3 years at school for the deaf and morbid syndrome, and then I was out with my kids, and then 7 years now at Bell.
Thank you very much. And our final person here is in our curriculum department. She's a middle school literacy coach, and I did not get to speak with her before, and it is Dawn Perez.
She didn't like it.
Dawn isn't here. We'll make sure she gets, maybe she's watching on TV. Okay, now we've got a couple more items of good news. And we can have you, we can keep you down here, or we'll at least get a picture of you, however you want to do it. So, tonight we're featuring actually three outstanding young people. We have a couple surprises that didn't make the agenda, and they have gained national or even international recognition recently. The first is Sophie Furagai, and if Robin Board and Sophie and your mother will come on up, and I'm going to say just a few more things about you. Sophie, I don't have, I don't have very much. Sophie is an eighth-grade student at Kane Creek Middle, and that's her day job. On Friday, October 11th, her job was a little more than that. Sophie is one of six girls selected from among students worldwide to speak at the United Nations as part of the International Day of the Girl. And Sophie just returned with her mother from the Dominican Republic, where she's been helping the Mariposa Foundation teach Haitian and Dominican girls to swim, and that's a very important skill in that area, in a safe environment. I'd like to, and you guys are up here, and I will pull up your presentation now. Sophie has a little bit to, and if we can take a picture.
It's not often that we have a middle school student to take the world stage. And Buncombe County is so strong in focusing in on global studies, and so we are so fortunate to have this young lady at our school and in our school system. She does us all proud. So I'd love that you could get to know Sophie and her mother, Jan.
Escherelena is nine years old. She's a twin, and she's deaf. Her mom died giving birth to her younger sister. Escherelena doesn't go to school and doesn't speak her no sign language, so it can be hard to communicate with her. She was in my swim class this past year and was terrified of the ocean. Escherelena howled in protest when I first led her into the water. She had no reason to trust me. There was terror in her eyes when I let go of her life preserver, and she couldn't feel the sand under her feet. After a moment of uncertainty, she realized she wasn't sinking, and a smile spread across her face. Her screams became laughter as Escherelena discovered how fun it is to play in the ocean. In that moment, when fear became joy, Escherelena and I formed an instant bond. I made a life-changing discovery when I realized that even at my young age, I could make a difference in someone's life. Now that I have seen the impact I can have, I feel a responsibility to keep doing what I can to improve the world. Just by sharing your natural skills and passions, you can make the world a better place. I first came to the Dominican Republic on vacation with my family, and we noticed that although tourists come to Cabaretay for water sports, most of the local population can't swim, especially the girls. Since we are competitive swimmers, we decided that I could be useful by teaching swimming lessons. We are lucky to find the Mariposa Foundation who accepted us as family volunteers. The Mariposa Foundation is an organization whose aim is to end generational poverty through the education and empowerment of girls and young women. The foundation works with communities on the north coast of the Dominican Republic, primarily in Cabaretay, a town of 14,000. There is one road through town. On the beachside, there are hotels and restaurants. Well, across the street, you'll find extreme poverty and sprawling shacks that flood every time it rains. Over the past four years, I've seen how difficult it is to change cultural beliefs, how successes can become failures, and how slow a project's pace can seem in the developing world. The Dominican Haitian families that make up the population struggle for access to shelter, food, healthcare, and education. Children attend public school for only half a day, and less than 20% finish eighth grade. There is no high school, so older girls help their families or try to get a job. Unfortunately, many get pregnant or get in trouble. When girls are home from school, they usually have household chores or take care of younger siblings. Boys have freedom and opportunities. Some end up at the beach and learn how to swim and learn foreign languages. Boys can go on to gain employment on Cabaretay's beaches as surf instructors, kiting assistants are working in local shops. I wish the girls had more freedom to explore and enjoy the beautiful country they live in and have the same employment opportunities as boys. Women who work invest 85% of what they make back into the community, whereas men only invest 35%. Providing opportunities through swimming not only empowers the girls and the families that they'll eventually have, but the local economy as well. Learning to swim may not seem super important on the surface, but the ripple effects from learning the skill are far-reaching. Like Escherelena, the stories of Ma Brady and Corolla will show you how learning to swim can redefine possibilities for girls. Ma Brady was in our first swim class four years ago, and she was a very determined learner. After three months, she could swim freestyle and backstroke and play safely in the big waves. She started coming along with us to surf, then she joined a swim team, and her skills continued to improve. Ma Brady, now 16, went on to become the first Mariposa girl to get kiteboard training from Laurel Eastman Kiting, where she now has a part-time job. She has a satisfaction of earning a paycheck and is building the confidence and independence that will serve her well into adulthood. This year, she is one of 16 girls sponsored by the Mariposa Foundation to attend high school. Corolla was really afraid of being out past the break, but she returned each afternoon to try again. As time went on, she loved being one of the ones who could swim. Just this spring, Corolla was hanging out at a hotel pool with some of her friends when she noticed something at the bottom of the pool. She dove in and rescued a nine-year-old girl who had sunk in the deep end. Corolla is a hero. Swimming really does save lives. So learning to swim is like a pebble being tossed into water, and the ripples might be getting a job, coming to love and protect something once feared, or even saving someone's life. Some end up at the beach and learn how to swim and learn foreign languages. Boys can go on to gain employment on Cabaretay's beaches as surf instructors, kiting assistants are working in local shops. I wish the girls had more freedom to explore and enjoy the beautiful country they live in and have the same employment opportunities as boys. Women who work invest 85% of what they make back into the community, whereas men only invest 35%. Providing opportunities through swimming not only empowers the girls and the families that they'll eventually have, but the local economy as well. Learning to swim may not seem super important on the surface, but the ripple effects from learning the skill are far-reaching. Like Escarolina, the stories of Ma Brady and Corolla will show you how learning to swim can redefine possibilities for girls. Ma Brady was in our first swim class four years ago and she was a very determined learner. After three months, she could swim freestyle and backstroke and play safely in the big waves. She started coming along with us to surf, then she joined a swim team and her skills continued to improve. Ma Brady, now 16, went on to become the first Mariposa girl to get kiteboard training from Laurel Eastman Kiting, where she now has a part-time job. She has the satisfaction of earning a paycheck and is building the confidence and independence that will serve her well into adulthood. This year, she is one of 16 girls sponsored by the Mariposa Foundation to attend high school. Corolla was really afraid of being out past the break, but she returned each afternoon to try again. As time went on, she loved being one of the ones who could swim. Just this spring, Corolla was hanging out at a hotel pool with some of her friends when she noticed something at the bottom of the pool. She dove in and rescued a nine-year-old girl who had sunk in the deep end. Corolla is a hero. Swimming really does save lives. So learning to swim is like a pebble being tossed into water and the ripples might be getting a job, coming to love and protect something once feared, or even saving someone's life. It takes many people working together to have a successful project. Our swim team collects suits and goggles. My school sends pen pal letters. 321 Takeoff Surf School lets the girls use Surfboard and equipment for free. And Laurel Eastman Kiteboarding sponsors and teaches extreme water sports. Cabaretay is only a small part of our world, but I know that there are girls everywhere in coastal communities who can't swim. The swim program developed by the Mariposa Foundation could be expanded and replicated anywhere. The foundation recently purchased land and is soon to open the Mariposa Center for Girls, the first facility of its kind in Latin America. The center will be a comprehensive educational and health facility and will be a model for our world. I would like to see centers like ours open worldwide, providing a safe and supportive environment for girls to learn and thrive. Even though an organization like the Mariposa Foundation can be doing so many things right, there is still so much to do and our efforts never seem to be enough. Just this week, I found out that my friend Ma Brady, who I consider to be like a sister, is pregnant and got married last night. Another thing I learned in advocating for girls' rights is that you always have to stay hopeful and move forward even when you encounter obstacles. It will take tremendous amounts of trust, courage, dedication, generosity, and love from parents, swimmers, instructors, and donors alike. But together, I know we can make a big splash.
Does anyone have any questions? I already spoke. Yeah. October 11th.
Okay. Second is North Buncombe High School student Jason Christman. And Jack Evans, if you'll come on up and introduce Band Director Andrew Shelton and Jason. And while they're coming up, I'll just say this about him. North Buncombe student Jason Christman was selected to participate in the National Honors Jazz Band in Nashville, Tennessee. I believe fewer than 20 high school musicians were chosen for this honor. Is that correct? And as Mr. Evans and Andrew will tell you, not only is this an amazing accomplishment, this young man is only a sophomore. And I'm sure Mr. Shelton has big plans for him.
Chairman Reinhardt, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin and our guests. Jason is an exceptional young man. He is a sophomore, but he actually qualified for this band as a freshman. So he is an amazing performer. He's one of our, he's one of the best that we've got at North Buncombe High School, I'll just be honest. A little bit of details, there was only 17 in the nation that qualified for this jazz band. And he was one of two alto saxs and only two in North Carolina even made it. So that's, that's quite a, quite a significant accomplishment there. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew. Andrew Shelton's our band director, which if you know about the Blackhawk Band, it's, it's impressive. It's fun to hear. So we're one of the best, if not the best. So Andrew, I'm going to let you tell a little bit more about Jason.
I will correct him. He's a tenor sax player and I know Jason wouldn't let me go home. Yeah. That's okay. You know. Yeah, well, they're all alds, so that's all that matters, I guess. I will say that Jason came to me and as far as I guess what music does for students, he, I knew, I started him in 6th grade when I was a student teacher at North Buncombe with Sandy Boone. And he spoke maybe three times to me all year, you know? And it was a little scary and he was doing things on his bass clarinet that frightened me a little bit because nobody did those things in 6th grade. You weren't supposed to play Super Mario Brothers that he had figured out. And when he played it, I thought, oh, this is going to be good. And then he played it and I went, oh my God, okay. This kid, I hope he stays at North Buncombe. And he did. And he's progressed. He has made all county bands. He has made all district concert bands. He's made all state honor bands. He's made all region jazz bands and he's made all state jazz bands through middle school and now into his high school career. And now he's with, at all national level, one of two, which is very impressive. And it's brought him from zero to 60, I guess you could say. He has socially bloomed, of course intellectually bloomed, and it's just awesome for me to watch as a teacher. And, you know, and it's, it's a process, but it's, it just makes it worth every day. And this guy is going to be one of the best. And he's, he spent the summer at a Juilliard Jazz Camp in Florida with some of the Juilliard Jazz teachers. And he just keeps doing, doing things that just blow my mind. And we will be playing, the North Buncombe Jazz Band will be playing at the State Music Educators Convention on Monday. And we're the, the North Buncombe Jazz Band, the high school and the middle school are the only two jazz bands from Charlotte to Murphy that have ever been asked to play at the state convention. So it's, it's cool for us and this guy's going to be playing several solos and hopefully we will knock some socks off down there. But thoroughly impressed, I want to say a thank you to his mom Cheryl Christman, a big supporter of him and our band program. And I'll warn you, Jason is, is a big talker. That's a joke, obviously. But he may, he may say a few things here and he's a man of few words, but if you ever hear him play, then you, you don't even need to hear him talk because this guy, this guy can do it. So Jason Christman.
Yeah, I would just like to thank everybody that's gotten me up to this point. Like Mr. Shelton, my middle school teachers, Ms. Sparrow and Mr. Benfield, and my mom, of course. And Nationals was the greatest. It was like heaven, honestly. Like being around that many people that care so much like I do and are, it was just almost overwhelming with all the talent there. And like, my roommate was a cello player from Utah and my, the drummer was from Pennsylvania and the baritone sax player was from Washington State. So it was, it was just awesome to meet that many people. It was in Nashville, Tennessee.
If you made all-state honor band, so you had to get to the all-state level and then you could send in a CD for the national level. And he sent one in for both concert and jazz. And got, got into jazz, which was harder than getting in the concert portion of that. So it was, it was great. Congratulations.
Mr. Reinhardt, maybe he should have brought his sax home with him tonight.
I would just say thank you to all of you because it's not just the music educators, but the administrators who are in the map to get the resources. And it's just incredible. We've got a great community for this. And it pays back. And we are, I'm going to be talking to my son about what you do pay to pay for. And we were talking about it in the way of what can you do to give thanks? Thank you very much.
And we have one more. And I'll ask Kristy Cheek to come on up and introduce Katrina Nguyen.
Good evening Chairman Reinhardt, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board. Katrina, you and Mrs. Sellers from Reynolds, come on up. And it is an honor for me to, Katrina asked me to be her senior project mentor. So tonight, she's counting hours for her project. So isn't that good? But she's doing her senior project on the value of career and technical education. At the CTE Administrators Conference, she was able to introduce Dr. June Atkinson and did a great job. And I had her speak to our beginning teachers the other day and just amazing. So I've asked Mrs. Sellers and Katrina to come and speak to you. And I want to say to the other two students, y'all are awesome. So we have great students and this is just going to be another example of greatness.
Dr. Baldwin, Chairman Reinhardt, board and guests. It is an honor for me to introduce Katrina Nguyen to you tonight. If you have a conversation with her, you feel like you are speaking with an adult who has already entered the business world. We went, when we went to introduce Dr. Atkinson to the North Carolina CTE Conference, we drove over there and I'm asking her questions and she is just responding. She literally travels across North Carolina by herself. She gets in her car, she drives from school to school to different DECA chapters across the state of North Carolina and she helps them organize their chapter. She helps them, if it's needing some, some revision, she works through that with them and she'll get right back in her car and she'll drive home, just as though someone who is already independently working. I'm going to let her tell you what she is planning to do, so I don't take everything that she's going to say, a little bit about what she does. I'm very proud of her.
When I walked into high school my freshman year, I definitely had no idea that I would end up here today as state president of North Carolina DECA. I know I was that really shy girl in the back of the classroom and I was scared to talk and give presentations, but through career technical education and through DECA, I've learned and grown as a leader. And it, I'm very thankful for all the opportunities that the North Carolina education system has given me because I know when I started out, I wouldn't have been here today. And it's very exciting for me to get to travel across the state and visit all these schools and show them how you can start from nowhere and you can become someone even if you don't think you can. So it's my opportunity to be able to do that. And DECA has given me so much. And for this next year, I'm planning on running for international president for DECA. So it'll be a very exciting journey and I'm very thankful that North Carolina will have my back. Thank you.
Yeah, we have, this is senior project log right here.
All right, next we have curriculum feature, accountability update. Ms. Warner.
Yes, sir. As Dr. Baldwin mentioned, today was an important day. Finally, our 2012-13 data was released. And with staff in the house, I am appreciative of all the work that our teachers, our instructional staff and our principals and leaders do every day to make students very much more successful in our school system. Now the real work begins. We're looking at the baseline data that we have received. We'll start the analyzation process, looking at subgroup performance, subject area performance, content performance. And I imagine it will be the topic of the PLCs tomorrow. So our schools will be ready to dig in and see where we can make improvements. But Mr. Gorsuch is going to share the new accountability system and show you some statistics.
Thank you and good evening. This does seem to be the culmination of a long wait. It's, it's our testing occurred at the end of last school year. It's been a long time coming. For me, it's been an especially long time coming because in 2007, I served on the North Carolina Blue Ribbon Commission on Accountability that developed the recommendations that ultimately led to this point. So it's, that report was presented to the State Board of Education in January of 2008. So it really has been a long process. But we are ready to share this information about the Ready Accountability Program, the report that came out today. I want to give you a little bit of background, not spend a lot of time on this, but just to give you a touchstone of where these results have come from. This, it's called the North Carolina Ready Initiative. And of course, anytime we see something in all caps in education, everybody wants to know what the acronym is. This is not an acronym. It means ready because that's what our goal is, is to make sure that students are ready for life after school. So a big part of the, three prongs of the Ready Initiative, first of all, included a new standard course of study that focuses on essential skills and knowledge that students will need to be successful as adults. That means in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics, adopting the common core state standards that many states throughout the country have used. And for those other subject areas, adoption of the North Carolina Essential Standards. This new standard course of study was implemented for the first time in 2012-13. The second part then of the initiative was the assessments that would be aligned to this revised standard course of study. And those assessments were administered for the first time in 2012-13. Those assessments called for a new accountability model that focuses on career and college readiness measures. And that's what we're reporting on this evening. The timeline for this standard-setting process started out with something that has been the normal activity for me for the last 20 years in working with, with testing. And that is to have all of our school system data cleaned up, verified, and submitted to the state by the end of June. So at June 28th, Buncombe County, along with every other school system in the state, had to have all of the test data, ungraded at that point, to DPI for the work to be done this summer. Then throughout July and August, approximately 200 classroom teachers and a third-party vendor worked on analyzing that data and following the standard-setting process that the state had established. At the October State Board of Education meeting, one month ago, the state board acted on recommendations from the NCDPI Division of Accountability Services to establish the proficiency cut scores on the new test and perhaps even more importantly, to adopt achievement-level indicators, definitions, descriptions of what achievement levels mean in specific terms, what students who are functioning at a designated achievement level are able to do. At that time, that analysis that accompanied the recommendations indicated that we would expect to see considerably lower proficiency levels based on these new higher standards when all of the analysis was finally done. And that had finally happened today. At around noon this after, today, the State Board of Education approved this Ready Accountability Report. So it's hot off the press for us to be here this evening to talk about it. So it is called the Ready Accountability Model and it represents a real significant change in the focus of testing. I came into testing here in Central Office in 1993, after the first year of end-of-grade testing and have seen the different manifestations of accountability programs as we've gone through the years. When we first started working with achievement levels, we talked about proficiency that would represent a student's being prepared for the next grade level. That was the definition of achievement level three and four, is this student is adequately prepared to be successful at the next grade or at the next course in the sequence in the case of high school courses. The big change now, as we're focusing on the future, is not just being ready for next year, it's being on a trajectory to be ready for career and college after graduating from high school. The accountability model's purpose is to provide the incentives and support to lead to our desired outcomes. We want student learning to improve. We want graduation rates to continue to climb until all students are graduating. And we want to close those troubling achievement gaps that we see between different demographic groups, both in Buncombe County and of course, across the state. To that end, this new model actually incorporates two different sets of progress targets. I'm going to actually talk to you about One has, and these progress targets are one of those. The first part mentioned of these two sets of targets is something that we're very familiar with. This is leftover from No Child Left Behind, these annual measurable objectives that were part of the federal No Child Left Behind legislation. And that was tied to reading and English Language Arts, mathematics, and one other academic indicator. By law, that other academic indicator had to be graduation rate for any school that graduated students. For schools that did not graduate students, we used attendance rate as that other indicator. So we continue, because the Elementary and Secondary Education Act has not been reauthorized, and so in effect, No Child Left Behind is still on the books. We still have to adhere to those requirements that are part of that law. But in seeking a waiver from the most stringent parts of No Child Left Behind, I'll remind you about that, the ultimate goal and requirement of No Child Left Behind was that 100% of students would be proficient in reading and math by 2014. And as we drew closer to 2014, it became obvious to policymakers and to our legislators that this wasn't a goal that was going to help us move forward, because it was essentially unattainable. And so North Carolina applied for a flexibility waiver last year after Secretary of Education Arnie Duncan opened that door for states to present this, and North Carolina presented a waiver request, and it was granted. Tied into that waiver request was a requirement that we would measure progress in areas that the federal annual measurable objectives do not address. So for this past year, when 2012-13, we implemented this new model. It is important to note that that last year, 2012-13, was a transition year. Because we knew that the results would be delayed, it's really hard to hold students or schools accountable for what happened during that year when the results come back so late. You know, at this point, we're as deep as we are into this school year, it would be pretty tough to go back and tell kids, no, you didn't, you didn't really pass last year. Or to schools, you really need to have an action plan that you haven't had the data to be able to act on so far. So 2012-13 is considered a transition year. There are no consequences for students or schools based on the results, the proficiency results that we will be seeing here. Those consequences will occur for the first time following this year. And this year, 2013-14, is also the first year for which the General Assembly's A- through F school performance grades will be attached. I do expect that at some point during this year, DPI will run a simulation on what these school performance grades would look like if they were applied to the 12-13 data, but that, I haven't seen a firm date or a firm commitment to that, but I do expect that we'll see it. So the components of the accountability model include these indicators. As I said, there are three different types of indicators: status indicators, growth indicators, and progress indicators. Now, at the elementary school level, those status indicators indicate, how did the students perform in this particular year? What proficiency level did they earn from the efforts in that particular year? At the elementary and middle school level, that is tied to end-of-grade math, English Language Arts, and science at grades five and eight. The growth indicator comes out of EVOSS, the Education Value Added Assessment System, that, and the key part of that is the VA, value added, how much has been added to the students' learning over the course of the past year. That's the growth indicator. That's different from the growth measures that we had under ABCs previously. And then the progress indicators are these targets that we were just talking about. How do, what kind of trend over time are we seeing for groups of students? The information that came out today established the baseline for moving forward. That ESCE flexibility waiver requires that we, as a state, set goals to cut in half our percent of non-proficient students over a six-year period. So part of the presentation to the State Board of Education today included charts that showed what these targets would be each year for the next six years, so that we reach that goal of cutting non-proficiency in half in that six-year period. So the same measures, end-of-grade math in grades three through eight, and English Language Arts in grades three through eight, and science in grades five through eight. So that's not, other than incorporating the EVOSS growth instead of the old ABCs growth model, that's not really that different than what we saw with ABCs with the elementary schools. But the high schools is where it is incredibly different, because in addition to the status indicator of using end-of-course to generate a performance composite, and of course, we're now, when we talk about end-of-course now, we mean Math 1, English 2, and Biology. Those are the three state-required end-of-course tests. But we also have the ACT, graduation rates, a new indicator called Math Course Rigor, ACT Work Keys, that's a program for our career technical education concentrators, and an indication of whether schools require graduation project. Buncombe County requires graduation projects in all of our schools, and so our reports all show that our, our schools do require that. EVOSS is also used as the growth indicator for the high school model, and that is based on end-of-course, only on those three end-of-course tests. The progress indicators, again, looking at trends over time, look at improvement in end-of-course proficiency, the ACT graduation rates, Math Course Rigor, and ACT Work Keys. Here's just some brief definitions of what those indicators mean. As I said, for performance composite, it's end-of-grade or end-of-course. Math Course Rigor refers to the percentage of our graduating students who have earned a credit in what we now call Math 3, which is the equivalent of Algebra II or Integrated Math 3. The graduation rate looks at both a four-year cohort graduation rate and a five-year rate. ACT Work Keys is based on the percent of those seniors who have graduated with a career technical education concentration and have earned a Silver, Gold, or Platinum certificate on the Work Keys assessment. The ACT, excuse me, go back. The ACT measure is based on the percentage of students who meet the composite score, that's the minimum admission requirement for the UNC system, which is an ACT score, composite score of 17. So the, it's percentage of students that meet or exceed that level. And as I said, graduation project is simply a yes or no. Does the school require it as an indicator of additional rigor used in those schools? All right, so how did we do? As Dr. Baldwin alluded to several of these things, I'll try to give a little bit more detail for. In regard to all of those progress targets that we were talking about, 15 of our 41 schools met all state and federal targets. That's 36.6%, includes 11 elementary schools: Avery's Creek, Barnardsville, Black Mountain Elementary, Black Mountain Primary, Hall Creek, North Buncombe Elementary, Oakley, Weaverville Elementary, West Buncombe, Woodfin, and Estes. There were three middle schools that met all state and federal targets: Reynolds Middle, Kane Creek Middle, and Valley Springs Middle, one high school, Buncombe County Early College. Statewide, 25.5% of schools met all the targets. So we, as a system, did better than the state. We had more than a third of our schools, only a quarter of the schools statewide, met all of those targets. In addition, we had nine schools that met all of the federal targets. The federal target is a subset of the state targets, and all of the federal targets are included in what's counted as state targets. But as I pointed out, with that ESCE flexibility waiver, there were additional targets that were added in, in other areas other than those required for the federal AMOs. Those nine additional schools that met all the federal targets were Candler, Hominy Valley, Pisgah, Williams, North Windy Ridge Intermediate, Coontz Intermediate, North Buncombe High, TC Robertson High, and Middle College. So overall, 24 of our 41 schools, nearly 60%, met all the federal targets. That compares to a little over a third of the schools statewide that met all of the federal targets. Interestingly, of those 26 schools, remember, 15 out of 41 met all state and federal targets. Of those 26 schools that did not meet all of the state targets, 11 missed only one target. Four others missed only two, and two missed only three. Of that, seven schools failed to meet targets only in science. We've administered science tests, of course, for many years, and there was a No Child Left Behind requirement at the state level for reporting to the U.S. Department of Education high school participation in science, but we never, have never reported out science as a part of our accountability model. This year, we did for the first time, seven schools missed a target there and only in As Dr. Baldwin indicated, on performance composite, Buncombe County Early College with a 74.6 was our highest performer. That's a great number, and I do think that you really get some perspective on how much tougher these standards are when you see that 74, 74.6%, and realize this same school was 100% last year. It indicates how much tougher these, these standards are. Glen Arden was at 70.7. We had five additional schools that had performance composites in the 60s, 17 in the 50s. Our LEA performance composite overall was 50.9. I'm really glad we were on that side of 50 from a public relations standpoint. And of that, as Dr. Baldwin pointed out, 72.5%, 29 of our 40 schools exceeded the state performance composite that was 44.7. They're on the wrong side of 50. On the growth side, that second set of target of indicators, we had 15 schools that exceeded growth expectations. This is compared to, the school's performance compared to the change that occurred at the average school in North Carolina, and these had to, had to be significantly, statistically significantly higher than the statewide average. These 15 schools were Bell Elementary, Fairview, Glen Arden, Hall Creek, Lester, Pisgah, Williams, North Windy Ridge, and Eblen. I want you to notice something there, that's not the same list that I showed when I was showing all the schools that met all the targets. Other than Hall Creek, and of course, Hall Creek really, Jenny, are you still here? Hall Creek deserves kudos because they made all of their targets and had exceeded their growth expectation. But what this indicates for us, of course, is even these schools that maybe did not meet all of their targets are still making really good progress. They're headed in the right direction and doing a great job. So that's the elementary part of this. Here's the middle and high school part of that 15 schools: Reynolds Middle, Kane Creek, Owen Middle, Inca Middle, Valley Springs Middle, and Early College. And again, Reynolds Middle, we got a good Reynolds Middle crew back there who are here celebrating, and Robin is here from Kane Creek Middle. Valley Springs Middle and Early College, again, are schools that both exceeded their growth expectation and met all of their targets. That deserves special recognition. Okay, so overall, 31 of our 39 schools that had growth projections, and I guess I ought to say a little why this number isn't 42, you know, we have 42 schools. Weaverville Primary doesn't have any test results, so they don't, they're not included in these numbers. And Middle College did not have tests administered that led to the calculation of the growth piece. And Black Mountain Primary, with only third grade, does not. So Black Mountain Primary, Weaverville Elementary, and Buncombe County Middle College are the three schools that aren't included in growth calculation. But 31 of 39, 79.5% met or exceeded growth expectations, and then comparing that to the state, that was, statewide, that was 71.3%. So again, we are significantly above the level of state performance. There's one other little piece I need to share with you. There was a new set of rules this year that was written into legislation that deals with how, how we deal with participation. Participation rules, and the basic rule is, we're required to test at least 95% of our students in these areas. And this applies to all those assessments, integrated in the course that are included in the performance composite, the ACT and ACT Work Keys. This is required for schools, required actions for schools not testing 95% in a given subgroup. I need to point out, the minimum subgroup size is 30. If you do a little math, on 95% of 30, how many students can you have not participate? You have to get to 40 before you can have two. So if you have, if you have a very, if you minimally make this subgroup size, you have very little flexibility, almost no room for maneuvering. But if any subgroup fails to meet that 95% participation target in this first year, the consequence is that the school has to send a letter to all parents informing them that the school failed to meet participation targets, and including a plan of how they're going to move forward in ensuring full participation. If that pattern continues into a second year, then the school gets labeled as a consistently low participating school and has to create a more intensive plan for full participation. And then if it happens in a third year, the consequence is that non-participating students would be factored in as being not proficient until the number of records reaches that 95% target. So we're in the first year of that, and we did have some schools that will have to send the letters home. Here's the list: Community High, Reynolds High, Middle College, Irwin High, Inca High, Glen Arden Elementary, and Robertson High. Of course, you notice all, but one of those schools is high school. And I have to tell you, one of the problems with this is with ACT. ACT is administered on two days in March. There is a statewide testing date, and there is a makeup day two weeks later. If you don't test every 11th grader on one of those two days, they're non-participative. So if you have a subgroup of, in the 30s, and you have more than one who you miss, you miss that target. And that is a big part of the impact on the participation rates here. Glen Arden had, they had two students, only two students in the entire school did not take the integrated test. It turned out that both of those students were students with disabilities. They had 32 in the subgroup and two that did not take the test. And so they missed that participation target. But you need to know that, that will be taking, the sending of these letters will take, will be taking place within the next 30 days, and we are aware that these consequences are in place and that we will be following up on that and working with those schools to make sure we're doing everything we possibly can to make sure that every student is participating in required testing. Do you have any questions for me?
A quick one, if I could, Mr. Chairman, since you were just talking about targets, because that kept going through my mind in the subgroups, because Ms. Swanger helped me, we've dealt with that for a number of years. The subgroups for a lot of schools, they're not the same across the board. One school, I know we've, in the past, we've had some schools with 32, 35, 36 subgroups, and some in teens, and maybe even lower, so you're the apples-to-oranges thing there. But when that subgroup, the example you just gave of 30 and two that disability and didn't take it, is that letter going home to that subgroup? Or is that letter going to the entire population of the school?
The entire population of the school.
Based on, theoretically, it could have only been the one subgroup for the entire school.
Correct.
And so the entire school parent population is going to receive that notification?
Right.
That just seems a little...
Right. And in fact, of the...
Punitive to me.
Of the participation targets that we missed, I believe I can, like, nine participation targets that we missed were subgroups that were in the 30s. So, it's, I would argue that it's not a fair rule. The minimum subgroup size prior to this year was 40, so that at least you had two.
Right, at least two.
But with dropping it to 30, especially with a test like the ACT where you have such limited opportunity to administer the test, it doesn't seem fair to me to have that kind of repercussion.
Does it make any sense, or can we, as a system, curriculum folks, in terms of sending that letter, offer something like the story, not story, but the data you just gave to us, or has the state said, no, you've got to send a generic, one paragraph letter?
No, we do have a sample letter, but that sample letter includes a place where a school can put in an explanation for what happened with the participation, along with their strategies for trying to make sure that we have full participation moving forward.
And I would guess then, the elephant in the room then is, if you've got multiple things there, your letter, if you, you want to be real with what you send and give data that can be absorbed and have some value to it for the people receiving the letter, without the letter becoming more detrimental than maybe it should be. So I would guess, from the superintendent's standpoint, that's where the, and staffing, and that will be the difficult part and the devil in the details.
The sample letter provided by the state, I feel, does soften this a bit. It does, it explains the rule and gives the school the opportunity to make whatever explanation it chooses to make. But it does, it does ask the school to convey to parents some strategies, what they're going to do to try to make sure that every student is...
Thank you.
When, I know this information, you just received it today, but as soon as you have something you can send out to all the board members as far as this information, if you'd please do so, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. I do have a summary report...
Yes.
...that shows the performance of all the schools.
That would be great.
I didn't bring copies with me, but we'll make sure that we get that to you.
Okay. Board members, any other comments or questions?
Yes. The board has received several letters from parents who are not happy with the Common Core standards, particularly in math. And I can speak from having a student in the new Math II class, that it is not geometry in high school, and it is not rigorous. It is what he learned in middle school, and I am not happy with these math standards. But let me address and clarify that you said the highest score Buncombe County received was at the Early College, and that was 74.6 percent?
That is the percentage of all test scores at that school that were at achievement level three or four.
Is that, I know there's a lot of teachers, principals in the room, is that a grade of like a C or a D? I mean, if you were scoring people?
When, when the general assemblies, school performance grade calculation parameters are finalized, what will happen, it will be an indexing of that number. So, using, you know, the state average as a center point, and then moving out from that as far as determining what is an A, B, C, D, or F. It's not going to be, no, it is not going to be on the traditional seven-point scale. That's not going to be the way that's done.
And, I mean, I feel the teachers have done an outstanding job with the students. I know that is true, but, you know, there is so much information out there now about the Common Core, and also about North Carolina's testing, the tests were flawed, that the material being, that teachers are forced to teach is not developmentally appropriate. And this, I'm not blaming you at all, you just had me standing here. But, you know, I feel like we're not looking at the root problem for these test scores, and we need to talk to the teachers who are teaching this material in Buncombe County, and find out from them, you know, what, what is the problem, you know, why are these scores low? What do you think we can do to change that? And I'm sure that's something that will happen. I just feel like we cannot blindly continue to think that these Common Core standards are wonderful, that they're raising the bar, because I don't see that in my son's math class at all. You know, I don't want us to put out propaganda to parents like this letter that my son just brought home with his report card yesterday, where it says that student learning is undergoing a transformation. For example, rather than teaching how to arrive at an answer and then complete practice items on a worksheet, we now present students with a problem and let them discover the process for finding the answer. I think in math particularly, there's got to be some fundamentals taught, some principles. Kids can't just be given a problem and expected to figure out the best process when that was determined many years ago. And there are more than one way to get to an answer, and I do think there is a place for group work, but not to the extent that I think the Common Core takes it that you're in a group practically all the time trying to solve a problem. I just, you know, want Buncombe County to look a little deeper into, you know, the root cause for these low scores, and how we can do something. And if we think the Common Core is not the best way to go, possibly, you know, send a resolution to our state board of education and our legislators asking them to stop Common Core.
Many of the issues that you have raised are common, in fact, I would say universally occur in the first year of implementation of any kind of radical change, of a big change. Our teachers, as I pointed out at the beginning of the presentation, this standard course of study revision was new last year. It was the first year of assessments. Our teachers are highly trained and have had a lot of professional development on working with this revised standard course of study, and the implementation of that will improve. I expect we're going to see dramatic improvements this year in proficiency. That always happens, and it will, and I'm confident it will happen again.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Dr. Baldwin?
Yeah. Just a, just a quick question, and it is confusing, Ms. Baldwin, but I think we've got to be very careful in that, you know, we're so used to, my generation, when you see 74.7, you're thinking, oh, so that was a test with 74 percent of those questions were answered correctly. This isn't what this is about. This is based upon looking at the standards, and the standards determine whether one reaches level one, two, three, or four. It has nothing to do with the correctness. It's all based upon those standards. So we've got to be careful in that we're not looking at numbers, and we're going to the traditional approach and saying, well, that indicates that only 40 percent answers were correct. This is, it is totally based upon looking at test performance and the standards.
The value of standards is in measuring progress over time. So, you have to have a baseline to start with. This year's our baseline.
Right.
And we measure progress over time from that. For that reason, even though on one level, of course, it's tough to see such lower numbers than we were accustomed to in the past, I actually like the idea of baselines being around 50, because that means there's plenty of room to go up, and we certainly hope we don't go down. But if, but if a school does go down, there's room to see that also. It's very difficult to see progress being made when schools are, have 85, 90 percent of their students performing at a proficient level. It's hard to tell who's really getting more, because you can't differentiate when everybody's that high. So, we're in a good spot, and overall, I feel that I'm very encouraged and very pleased with the overall performance of our schools in this report.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I don't feel like it's our place to defend these standards. They were never field tested. I mean, I can't see North Carolina ever putting something like this. In their past, they've never, would never put any standards in place that had not been field tested. Our children are guinea pigs right now. And, you know, I think if we truly wanted to see how well these standards were working out, we would maybe ask our state legislators to implement an achievement test that's been around a long time, like, just for example, the California Achievement Test. I know a lot of homeschoolers take these sorts of tests, too. I think a test that's just been developed, you know, very quickly in response to the standards, that were also developed rather rapidly without time to field test them. The test itself was not field tested, is that correct?
I would challenge that statement totally. That is totally untrue. These standards have been well researched and well field tested. And you're going to find that even in nationally normed, that those standards are incorporated also.
Where were the Common Core standards field tested?
They were field tested throughout North Carolina. We've done field testing ad nauseam.
Well, I have the lieutenant governor telling me that they were not field tested. I have university professors telling me they were not field tested. I have three people who were on the committee nationally who said they would not approve these standards.
I think it's time to move on. I mean, we certainly, there's a big political discussion about Common Core standards, and I don't think we're going to answer that question here tonight. So, Ms. Baldwin, I think at the last work session, I suggested to you that if you wanted to put a resolution together to put on the agenda, just let me know, and we'll add that to the next agenda, and we can, we can discuss it then. So, I mean, there's a lot of debate back and forth, a lot of things on the internet, so, I don't know. Any other board members have any questions, comments? Mr. Corshis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corshis.
All right, next we have public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that you have three minutes to make public comment. If you haven't signed up, it's not too late. You can go to the back of the room to your right and still sign up. Who do we have signed up first?
I'll have to go home and see if the lieutenant governor's comments about Common Core on the internet. What I wanted to start out with is the $5 million on technology. Seems a little bit to me like we're putting the horse before the cart. An infrastructure is extremely important. What I would like to see more about is how much the applications to take advantage of that infrastructure are going to cost. I work all over the country, all over the world, actually, and I work in technology consulting. And one of the questions that I've always asked companies before they're getting ready to spend millions of dollars, what kind of measurements do you have in place to understand the impact of those technology dollars that are being spent? Right? I mean, that's a real issue. If we're going to spend $5 million, is $6 million going to help us more? Is $4 million going to impact us? Are our kids going to get a better education because we spend $3 million versus $5 million on technology? So what I'd ask you now, how are you measuring the impact of the technology that we're already using and those dollars that have been spent? So for example, and I'm just making a number up, if our budget increased from $4 million to $5 million on technology, how did that impact our success rates with students? Do we know? Because that's really the issue. Now, if it was, if it was me, I would, I would have wanted to spend that $5 million on teachers. At the end of the day, it's the teachers that have the biggest impact. I've got a son in fourth grade, and I am disappointed in the math standards in his class, but I'm not sure if that's the impact of Common Core yet or not. But I do know, in the training that I do in technology, we don't need technology to teach technology. We need to teach critical thinking, we need to teach logic. Those are the kinds of things that I think are more important, and that goes back to the teacher. I would also ask, how are the teachers going to take advantage of this technology? If we've got a five to nine-year timeline on this, how are the teachers going to take advantage of that? Where's that money? It seems like we're front-loading a lot of the money on infrastructure, the $4 million, and we're not really looking at how everybody's going to take advantage of it, and how much of that's going to cost. You know, what are those applications going to cost? That's, that's how we really leverage that technology. If we don't look at that first, and how the teachers are going to take advantage of it, then we're just spending $5 million on infrastructure. I like teaching and using technology. I do it all the time. I think that's good. I just think that we need to focus more on how teachers are going to benefit from the technology, how students are going to benefit from the technology, and what they're actually going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Kates.
Well, I could stay home and watch this and be a lot more comfortable. But when I looked at the agenda, I had to come and address the board, because I see your 2200 series where you are saying that if a board member should inform the superintendent or chair in advance of any time they intend to make a statement regarding school business, does that mean that any member of this board, if they're out in public, and somebody from the media asks them a question, or a parent asks them a question, they can't answer that question, they've got to come back and see somebody here? It almost looks that way. It says the procedure does not alter the responsibilities of the superintendent or records custodian. But when you say all board members requesting information from the central office staff must be directed to the superintendent, requests should not be directed to other staff, you are establishing a gatekeeper, which there was a lawsuit against Buncombe County, Wanda Green, for trying to do the same thing. Now, I know that your attorneys have said this is a procedural process for the board members, so I, as a citizen, don't have to obey that. So you have just made your board members second-class citizens. You are controlling what they can do and who they can request information from. So in reality, as I read that, I come to a conclusion. I think you should combine all three of these into one procedure, and it's to shut Lisa Baldwin up and keep her from asking questions. She's asked too many questions. I've heard people say that. But you know, that's what education is about, asking questions. And when you say that a board member can't sit in this meeting and ask you questions and have an open discussion, something is rotten at Denmark.
Thank you, Mr. Yelich.